Good evening, everybody. This always takes a minute to quiet the conversation. I always feel bad that I have to do that, so welcome. My name is Wayne Kazmercheck. I'm the superintendent of White Bear Lake Schools. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We have a wide variety of students being recognized this evening, from skiers to gymnasts and wrestlers and the arts, and so we have a very nice event planned tonight. And I have help from some of our administrators here, but I'm going to kick us off with our girls and boys alpine ski qualifiers. Now, before I start, I'm pretty sure the skiers have something to do with our never-ending winter, so if any of you need someone to blame, it's these folks who are going to come across and receive their recognition for their wonderful ski season. They just don't want the winter to end, apparently. All right, congratulations to the following students who represented the district at the Alpine Ski State Competition. Maggie Blanding. Maggie qualified as an individual in addition to, as an individual. And Alpine Ski Coach Fred Fern. All right, if you, I'll wait till it gets through. Okay, if you would all come back for a photo. And once Ari is done, then we'll invite the parents and family members to take a photo as well.
Okay, so if everyone can just make sure that they can see me, so that the camera can see you, that would work. Okay, can you squeeze a little? Yeah, yeah, that'd be perfect, thank you.
Are you ready for this?
Yes. Okay, there we go. Ready, one, two, three, and cheese. I'm gonna take one more here. Okay, and then if you're just wanting to get pictures, I'll move out of the way.
Finally, if the, if parents or family members who are here supporting their skier, would you please stand up? We know countless hours go into supporting your athletes, so thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, girls and boys Nordic Ski State Qualifiers, are any of them here tonight? Okay, they're not here tonight, but I'm going to read their names nonetheless. Olivia Schwintek, Scott Shield, Trig Solberg, and Coach Seth Salinger, and we'll make sure the certificates are sent out to them. So, at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bosch up to the podium.
Thank you, Wayne. I'm from White Bear Lake area high school south campus. I'm happy to introduce the following student athletes. Congratulations to the following students who represented the district at the wrestling state tournament. Before I read the individual athletes here, I also want to mention that our wrestling team achieved gold academic status at the state tournament with a 3.6 grade point average, so congratulations to the wrestlers. So our first wrestler who qualified for the state tournament is JJ Andres. He's not here. TJ also was all-state at the wrestling tournament as well. And our head coach Craig Nazvik. Okay, wrestlers, we need you back, and coach, to take a group photo with the school board members.
So kind of with the last group, if we can just make sure that you can see, everyone can see me, so the camera can see you. Finding the window. Okay, perfect. There we go. And here we go. One, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna take a few here. One more. Okay, and then if parents want to get a picture, I'll move out of the way.
Parents in the audience, please stay standing so we can recognize you as well. Next, I have girls gymnastics. Congratulations to the following student who represented the district at the gymnastics state competition, Alexis Henin. Alexis, coaches are not here this evening, but I'll read their names as well. Kendra Kappenberger is a co-head coach along with Kelly Rivers.
There we go. And, one, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna take one more here. Okay, and then I'll move out of the way, just in case anyone wants to get a picture.
If Alexis' parents are in the audience, please stand as well to be recognized. At this time, I will turn it over to Christina Pierre, our principal at Sunrise Park Middle School.
All right, I'm happy to introduce the following middle school students. I'm going to start with a student who was eligible to compete in the 2018 Minnesota National Graphics State B last Friday. She's not here tonight, but I'd like to recognize Megan Von Ostran from Sunrise Park Middle School. All right, we're moving on to the Scholastic Art winners. So, district, middle school, and high school students were also successful in Scholastic Art Awards program. Congratulations to the following students who represented the district in this prestigious annual competition. First, the, we'll start with Central Middle School. Honorable Mention Awards, Kayden Drake. All right. Abby Lilo. Annika Walters. Annika actually received two honorable mention awards. Now for the Silver Key Awards, McKinley Bemlett. Raylin Bick. Evelyn Mayby. And Sarah Tolifson. Okay, Gold Key Awards, Jacob Burkett. Grady Gallatin. This student also received an honorable mention in addition to a Gold Key, Michael Hoffman. Gold Key for Eldoria Lilo. This student received two Gold Key Awards, Margaret Peterson. This student also received an honorable mention, Madeline Riker. This student received a Gold Key and an honorable mention at Youth Art Month in the middle school division, Jason Tilma. And the art teacher at Central Middle School, Molly Vadness. All right, continuing on to Sunrise, Honorable Mention Awards, Alex Brown. And Astrid Scharf. Silver Key from Sunrise Park, Song Jeong. And Song also received an honorable mention, art teacher at Sunrise Park Middle School, And Don Boschel announced the high school students.
Oh, we'll do a picture first with the middle school students.
So kind of similarly, if you can just make sure that you can see me, so the camera can see you, that'd be perfect. Are we able to bunch in a little bit more, like make a, yeah, that would be perfect. Yep. Thank you. Okay. Yep. Over here. There we go. Oh, I see what you're saying. Maybe, do you want to scoot over, like right over here? Would that work? There we go. Does that work? There we go. Perfect. I can see everyone now. Okay, there we go. One, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna take a few here. A few more. Okay, and then I'm gonna move out of the way, so parents, can you get pictures?
All right, congratulations. Parents of middle school students, I know some of you were standing to take pictures. Could you please stand again and be recognized as well? Thank you for all your support. All right, moving on to our high school students. Honorable Mention, Ben Vander Bosch, who I believe is not here this evening. Silver Key Awards, Gina Carpenter. Kami Kendall. And Grace Leclair. Gold Key Awards, Rachel Lasilla. Beck Lilo. And our art teachers from the high school who are not in attendance this evening, Sean Gritsmacher and Jennifer Latif. All right, high school students, if we can have you come back to take a picture.
Maybe you want to stand like we heard. Yep, there we go. Ellen, do you want to like pop your head out? Perfect, okay, there we go. Okay, one, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna take a few here. Okay, and then I'm gonna move out of the way.
All right, congratulations. Oops, one more. It's all right. Very quickly, parents for the high school students, please stand again and be recognized. Thank you for your support. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Kazmercheck for some closing remarks.
I just want to thank you all for being here. There are some cookies in the back, unless the skiers ate them all. They're, just kidding, I should take it easy on the skiers, I suppose. There are cookies there. A regular board meeting starts at seven, so you're welcome to stay for that. Otherwise, we'll be around between now and then if you'd like to come up and visit with me or any administrator or any of the board members. So, again, thank you for being here, and great job, students.
Good evening. Like to call to order this school board meeting of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Fahey here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
And before we get up and do the pledge, I would just like to turn it over to Dr. Kazmercheck to talk about the computer, and we have two members that are out of town and how the process works pursuant to the code. So, Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. So Minnesota statute allows school board members to attend meetings remotely, and we have that tonight. Actually, I think this is the first time we've done this in White Bear. The statute's been in place a couple of years, I believe. So for tonight's meeting, two of our board members, Kim Chapman and Jessica Ellison, will attend the meeting via computer. So we have listed each of their locations on the board agenda as follows. Mr. Chapman is at the Quality Inn and Suites in Suites Beachfront in Galveston, Texas, and Board Member Ellison is at Capital Skyline Hotel in Washington, DC. So as you see, we have one computer for the board to see Chapman and Ellison, and one situated so that they can see the entire board. So that's the one over by the podium, and this is the one where you can see them when they, when they speak, they're, they appear on the screen. So tonight, we'll only take roll call votes, there won't be any voice votes, and that's a requirement, again, according to statute, so there, so that we can document votes properly, so there's no, there's no mix-up in terms of voice vote versus, versus the roll call vote. So that's what's going on, that's why you see the computers here up front, and that will be how we conduct the meeting this evening, so.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. And with that being said, we're just going to take it nice and slow, make sure that everything goes off a hitch. If something happens and there's some technical difficulties that play into this, Mr. Garrison will then take the computer and deal with it, but we will continue the meeting to move everything along. So with that, I would like to ask everybody to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have before us an agenda, and I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
It's all moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. This will require a roll call vote.
Fahey, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. We also have before us a consent agenda. This is the sundry items that consistently go along with, in a board packet. One of the things that we are very, very appreciative of is the donations that the district gives, and in that is some large donations to our school, $5,000 to the Vadness Heights, $4,000 to some of the youth programs. We very much appreciate those. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
It's all moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. This will require a roll call vote.
Fahey, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
With that, we now also have a consent agenda. This is the time in our meeting where we accept public comment. The public comment is made by speakers, everybody having three minutes. Typically, the board does not react or do not discuss those things. We take the comments in, typically we take notes, and we've kind of moved that through. We've gotten several cards that would like to provide public comment, and I apologize if I chop your last name up, I, it's not my intent at all. So with that, we can start with, is it Christina Hayden?
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yep?
Well, thank you for giving me this forum and this opportunity to share with you the topic that, and the reason I am here tonight, is I was approached to speak on behalf of how the IB program has shaped who I am today. And they were actually asking me to say how it shaped me as a teacher today, and I had to step back and say, it has, you know, it's shaped who I am as a person. And when I, how I get to that point is, well, let's step back and say, here's a little piece of me. I have been teaching in the district in fourteen, for 14 years. White Bear Lake District has been such a, it's my second home. I'm from St. Paul, and coming here and learning about our kids and the loyalty we have for our families has been absolutely amazing, and it's been a place that I want to stay because it's who I am is shown every day with the families that I work with. And I want to step back because I can uniquely say, I have been in the same building, no, I take that back, I can uniquely say I've been in the same classroom, but I've taught in three different buildings. And what that means is that when I was hired, I taught Parkview Elementary, which was a neighborhood school. That's when I was introduced to this amazing community, and I knew this is where I wanted to be. I then was part of coming together as Parkview Center Point and learning this process of what the IB program could look like. I did not understand the IB program when it was presented. It is a very hard program to understand, and that is because it is not meant to be laminated, it's meant to be lived. The IB program is, is the opportunity to show what you know instead of, you know, if I understood it, it would not be a powerful enough program to shape the everyday changes that we have for our children. So I knew this was a place I wanted to stay. I knew the White Bear community was my home, I knew the IB program at Parkview Center Point, I knew my dedication was there. We became Matoska. The change that we became, I am so proud because we took risks and we didn't always know where we were going, but we trust the process. So I need to step back and say, how IB has shaped me as a person today is because it has allowed me to take risks with my teaching, it's allowed me to learn from my mistakes, and I make mistakes every day because it has taught me that mistakes are how we learn. And so it's presented for me this opportunity to, you know, you know, present, you know, caring and partnership with people from around the world. I love that I get to work with other educators and learn from them, and that's where it has shaped who I am today, is because I've met other educators who I would not, I don't think I would have if I wasn't part of the training that's involved to be in IB program. So, I want to leave kind of with that thought that I'm not only an IB educator, I'm an educator in the White Bear community that provides this amazing opportunity for choice among our children, and I am just one person in a school that cares about me and is part of, part of the White Bear community. I invite you, I'm a visual learner, I need to see it in action. I live it every day. I live with, I am so, I'm so lucky, I have the gift of working with the view of life through six and seven-year-olds.
Ms. Hayden?
Yep.
I apologize, we're pushing on three minutes, if you could wrap it up, please.
I would like to wrap up with the idea that I teach international-mindedness. I don't teach, and what that means to me is I'm teaching children how to approach situations with open-mindedness and taking risks, and that's internationally-minded, is not just looking at a program but living it, and I get to do that every day. And so I am so, I just want to leave with gratitude that this opportunity has allowed us to step back and evaluate our practices. It's allowed families to share what's important to them and what we do, and so I'm very grateful that this gave us that opportunity to step back and say, are these practices that work for our families? And we walk away with, our community and our families are very, they feel loved, they feel supported, and so that is how IB has shaped who I am as an educator. I get to work with families every day.
Thank you very much. Next will be, is it Kate Peck? Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for your service. My purpose in speaking to you tonight is to ask that you stick to your commitment with international baccalaureate in the middle schools. I make this petition with my perspective as a 1996 graduate from White Bear Lake who still vividly remembers the day I was told the programs I cared about and teachers who cared about me were being cut. This ninth-grade day was my high school climax, a turning point in my education. It made such an impact on my life that I chose to become a secondary teacher and wrote in my college graduation portfolio that I felt I had been forgotten in high school, and I wanted to do better. As our family considered moving back to White Bear Lake a few years ago, I felt reluctance as both an educator and a mother. However, I was pleased to hear a positive community perception of the district. I toured several schools, and I loved what I saw, specifically with Matoska, IB, and the new implementation of IB in the middle schools. It appeared the district was making an organized, committed, and forward-thinking investment in its students. Now, starting a new school was no small feat for my third-grade daughter because she struggled with anxiety. I was happy with her previous school, but soon realized the significant difference of Matoska's expert teaching to the whole child. After one week, her consistent anxiety-induced stomach aches went away and never returned again, not even for the transition to middle school. I recently asked her why, and she said, "Oh, Mom, I'm a risk taker." In other words, the common language provided IB was something she owned, embraced, and used to her advantage. As an educator, I have made White Bear Lake's IB story a focus of research as I'm working on my master's degree at Hamlin. Because of what I learned, I switched my elective focus by enrolling in the IB Teaching and Learning Certificate Program at Bethel. I will soon find myself actively looking for another teaching job, and whether or not that job is in an IB school, I want IB's embodiment of best practices in my toolbox. So this brings us here today, a day where many of us are feeling confused and disillusioned with the recommendations that appear contrary to the CARRY report. Recommendations our administration is suggesting despite repeatedly stressing that IB was not the actual problem. And gosh, am I worried. I'm worried that my initial concerns about the White Bear Lake area school district are valid. I'm worried my family chose to move to a district that might drop its kids like it dropped to me more than 20 years ago. We must do better. The International Baccalaureate, of course, is not the only answer, but it feels like our answer. It's a program we have already committed to, and it gives us a solid plan. It is world-renowned, comes with quality controls, and has a 50-year track record. Our track record should be better. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Ryan, is it Vernas?
Vernas.
Vernas, excuse me, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kazmercheck. My name is Ryan Vernas. I'm a lifelong educator, and I've served children and families in a variety of roles, including as a teacher, as a Minnesota State Teacher of the Year, an Education Policy Fellow in the Obama Administration, Strategic Planning and Policy Administrator for St. Paul Public Schools, and now currently as a principal, and I'm also a father of two children at Matoska International. We chose White Bear Schools and Matoska because of their IB programming. Now, not because IB is inherently Now, not because IB is inherently better than any other school programming, or that we believe IB teachers are better than any other. But we chose IB because the methodology and framework works best for our children. It was a choice of ours, and it saddens me that we are on the verge of losing that choice for middle school due to poor implementation, planning, and a case of strategic whiplash in this district. Now, I've been involved in helping lead a few different strategic plans in schools. It's not an easy process, and it takes innumerable hours to gather stakeholder feedback and insight to put together an innovative plan that will help move students and the district forward. There are three elements that I believe every quality strategic plan should include: cohesion, choice, and commitment. Cohesion: a common language that secures pathways from pre-K through grade 12. Eliminating IB from middle school does not offer cohesion. There will no longer be a common framework linking Matoska students to middle school. Choice: offering families multiple programmatic opportunities like IB or STEM so parents can choose what fits best for their child. Eliminating IB from middle school reduces choice for families. There will be nowhere for our families that wish to continue the IB framework except for out of district. And commitment: a clear pledge by district administration and the school board that there is implementation support and that we will not waver when there are challenges. Eliminating IB from middle school after only a couple of years calls into question the dedication this board will have to any other initiatives. Now, there's no denying that there have been challenges at the middle school level. There was a lack of intentional implementation support provided for teachers, administrators, and families. There was also initiative overload as the district simply threw too much at one time at the middle schools. And as a school leader, I can tell you from experience, trying to be good at everything will guarantee you that you're not good, truly good at anything. Eliminating IB will not alleviate the challenges facing our middle schools. Scheduling is always nightmarish. Rallying a staff to lean in to change rather than run from is difficult. And yes, IB takes funding, but we have growing enrollment. I ask you to be open-minded, be reflective, be principled, be a thinker, be an inquirer, be a risk taker, and tackle the challenges of implementation head-on rather than running from them. We expect it from our children. We should expect it from our leaders as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be, is it Ellie O'Brien?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I am a parent of two children at Matoska. And while I do have something to say about elementary schools, I hope that you won't find what I have to say intending to be distracting at all. This is an issue that I've been dealing with for the winter. So what I want to share with you are just some observations I had in going to a visit with my daughter who was asked to come look at the Lincoln Explorations Program. So this is mult-age classrooms for kids grades three through five. We were, we entered for the tour and we were taken upstairs and told that we could observe a classroom. And my daughter went into a classroom of 22 male students and a teacher. We were then asked after that observation to go meet with a panel of students who were going to talk about their program. And four boys came to talk to her about a school that she might want to go to. And she felt very uncomfortable. She didn't feel welcome. And for me, as a woman who is a, I work at a place called Women's Advocates, gender equality is something that's very important to me, I was so disappointed. I didn't want to make any assumptions, so I emailed the gifted and talented coordinator. And she did tell me that the enrollment in the classrooms is basically two to one, boys to girls. And I thought, how could this be? The materials that are given to parents say that this is a program based on highly-defined data that welcomes students of a certain ability. There is not in history ever been highly-defined data that says boys are smarter than girls. But here we're using these fully-loaded labels, gifted and talented, and creating an environment that's two to one, boys for girls. I thought, how could that be? Well, for me, for my daughter, it's because she did not feel welcome in that environment whatsoever. There's no chance she'd want to be there. So I looked back into the parent materials that were provided to parents in the previous year where there was that same gender imbalance between boys and girls. Well, here's a picture of eight smiling boys and one girl saying, "Come check out our Unless you feel represented and welcomed into that program, you're not going to feel like that's a place for you. I don't know how many girls are accepted versus boys. I also observed a racial imbalance, but because the gifted and talented coordinator was not able to give me facts on that, I don't want to comment on that. But what I do know is what she told me, the boys versus girls. I presented these questions to her and received no response, which is why I wanted to come speak to you tonight. I know that Chair Mullen said that you don't answer questions. I was hoping you would because on the form that I filled out, it said that you would hope to answer a question. And I really wanted to come here, open-minded, and just ask, does that concern you? It's the same question I asked the coordinator who didn't respond to me. Does this concern you? Because it concerned me quite a bit. To be honest, I walked into that classroom, I thought, this is the beginning of the pay gap. This is the, the lack of representation we see in industry, in government, all across our culture. It's starting in third grade. There is no data that tells us third-grade boys are more gifted or talented than girls. And I, I want you to understand that my second grader felt that when she entered that classroom.
Thank you very much for your comment. What I think we'll do is ask Dr. Kazmercheck to follow up with you to make sure that those questions get answered.
Thank you.
All right. And then the last card that I have is a comment card, but I want to make sure that Gloria Nathanson, that you didn't want to speak or that you do want to speak?
Yeah.
She does? Okay. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening. So there's a few things I wanted to cover tonight. The first is, I did send an email to multiple members of the board, to the district, a number of individuals. And I expressed a serious concern about diversity and representation and discrimination and things that I've noticed come up. For example, the school rating of two. A friend of mine contacted me and said, "Well, should I move here or not?" And I said, "Yes, of course. They're great schools."
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, sorry. They're wonderful. Mm-hmm. And, and they told me, "No, well, your school rating is two." And I was shocked by that. And I did some research, and I saw it was because of the diversity reasons that the school had a rating of two. So I did more research, and there was actually recently a termination of a faculty of color. And that's even more concerning to me. So really, I want answers. I've sent emails. I haven't heard anything. I sent that note again. I haven't heard anything. And I want reassurance that you're working on this issue, that you're recognizing that it's an issue and you're doing something, that there's something in the works. And the issue is I'm not hearing anything back at this point. And the second part is related to the IB comments. I have nothing against IB at all, but as a mother of a deaf son in this district, I proposed for ASL courses to be included. So he has peers that he can communicate with on a regular basis. But the problem then becomes, IB as an organization, they don't recognize ASL because they don't have anyone in that organization that does ASL, that has that skill set. So I've asked them, you know, how can we do this? How can I work with you? And they've said, "Well, if the school's interested, if the parents are interested, we can put someone in. We can do that." So my question then becomes, if we're keeping IB, if we can do that, can you inform IB and say, you know, "Let's do ASL. We have interest in this language," to make it possible? Because my son right now, he's alone in his school. He doesn't have many friends. He doesn't have as many opportunities as other students. So I'm just requesting if you can, if we're going to continue IB specifically, if you can inform the IB organization that there are people who are interested in doing that and having that class offered. Okay?
Thank you very much for your comments. I will ask Dr. Kazmercheck to follow up with you too, please. I got two other comment cards. I just want to make sure that if anybody else wanted to speak, that they have the opportunity to. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the podium. Good evening. Can you tell us your name, please?
Good evening, Superintendent, honored board members. My name is Sadie Schrader. Upon completion of graduate school at the University of Minnesota, I became a Minnesota resident. I reside in St. Paul. I am here regarding the troubling video showing workers at one of your vendors, BioCorporation, drowning pigeons, injecting live crayfish with latex, and discussing other egregious acts that are business-as-usual in the dissection supply industry. At BioCorporation, pigeons arrived alive and tightly-packed into plastic crates. Workers submerged the crates in water, drowning the birds. The AVMA deems death by drowning inhumane and unacceptable. A veterinarian who watched PETA's footage commented that drowning would cause the pigeons prolonged pain and distress. The birds would panic, hyperventilate, and struggle to keep their heads above water. They would then hold their breath until they couldn't any longer. At that point, their lungs would fill with water, leading to vomiting, painful spasm, cardiac arrest, and death. The company was charged with 25 counts of cruelty to animals. Dissection suppliers continue these cruel practices because schools continue to purchase animals for dissection even though modern humane alternatives are increasingly being adopted. All U.S. medical schools have ended animal dissection activities. There is no educational value or reason for students to dissect animals. A growing majority of young people are opposed to dissection, but some students are uncomfortable speaking up because of fears of potential repercussion. The many benefits of humane instruction, such as digital dissection, are well-documented. Dozens of peer-reviewed studies show that dissecting animals is bad science, whereas when students use modern methods, they learn faster, they are able to repeat material until they're proficient. Studies show that students prefer using humane alternatives. And dissecting animals has been shown to dissuade some students, especially females, from entering science-related fields. The act of cutting open an animal teaches children that living beings are disposable and downplays the fact that they were once alive and are often killed exclusively for these outdated exercises. This is a very dangerous lesson, especially with increasing incidence of cruelty to animals perpetrated by juveniles and an epidemic of school bullying. We hope the board chooses to support humane science education by replacing animal dissection with computer-based learning tools that are superior and humane. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on their public comment? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. I really appreciate it. The board has been taking notes, and we'll ask Dr. Kazmercheck to follow up with those areas that we were, we talked about. With that, we will go into our first informational item, Item C1, the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. All right, this evening before the regular school board meeting, we recognize students who represented the district in state or national-level contests, including Girls and Boys Alpine Ski State Qualifiers, Girls and Boys Nordic Ski State Qualifiers, Wrestling, Girls Gymnastics Team Member, A-Girls Gymnastics Team Member, Middle School Geography B Students, Scholastic Art and Scholastic Art Award winners. Congratulations to these students and their families. We have six finalists for this year's White Bear Lake Teachers Association Teacher of the Year Award. Maggie Clark from Oneika Elementary, Ben Kirkham from White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus, Cassie Knutson from White Bear Lake Area High School South Campus, Ally McCann from North Campus, Mel Tolusti from Central Middle School, and Melissa Wickert from North Campus. The district's 2018 Teacher of the Year will be named at the Teacher of the Year Extravaganza Event on April 19th at 4:45 PM at the White Bear Lake Area High School South Campus Out of Torium. Each year, the Excellence Event honors the top 10% of the senior class for their academic achievements. The students also select educators to honor as they receive this award. This year's event will take place on the evening of Wednesday, April 25th, at Jimmy's Conference and Catering in Badness Heights. The middle school musical production of Singing in the Rain with participants from both Central and Sunrise Park Middle Schools will take place April 26th, 27th, and 28th. Tickets are available online at the district website. Additionally, a limited number of free tickets are available at our senior program as well. A complete listing of upcoming district productions can be found on the district website. And tonight, we are honored to have with us White Bear Lake Lion Bob Lundberg, who will present information about district student Nora Osland, who is the White Bear Lake Peace Poster Contest winner. Welcome, Lion Bob, and welcome, Nora.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Bob Lundberg and from the White Bear Lions Club and Chair of the Peace Poster Contest. Now, just a little bit about the Peace Poster Contest. The Peace Poster Contest is the largest art contest in the world. Over 600,000 students participated this last year from 270 different countries. The peace poster, as you see Nora holding up here, when the kids, the kids have a theme and they have to illustrate that theme in a poster, and they cannot use any letters, words, or numbers. I'll enter, Nora is a seventh-grade student at Central, and I'll let her introduce her poster.
So the theme this year was the future of peace. And in my poster, I showed the future by putting it on an iPad. And I showed peace by including all the different countries.
Thank you very much. It's a beautiful poster.
Thank you. And we're going to ask you to stay. And board members, we're going to go out and present her with a certificate and a bear pen, just like we did earlier tonight, and then we'll have your photo taken as well. So if you would come on over and...
I would like to also introduce Nora's parents, Doug and Amy Osland.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Yep, there's another one. Maybe the board members, if you would stay there. Yes, but different, different reason. So, thank you. Bob, we'll, we'll take more pictures of you, Bob, if you wish. We'd be happy to. Thank you for being here, both of you. Thanks, Bob. Always a pleasure. Another special honor tonight is given to a district staff member. White Bear Lake Area Schools Special Education Teacher and Cross Country Assistant Coach, Sue Whirl... White Bear Lake Area Schools Special Education Teacher and Cross-Country Assistant Coach Sue Whirl was honored with a state Breaking Barriers Award earlier this year. She was one of twenty-one women honored, thirteen for breaking barriers and eight for other recognitions during the Thirty-Second Annual Minnesota National Girls and Women in Sports Day Celebration. Congratulations, Sue. So Sue, would you please come up and we have the same figure? Thanks for being here, Sue. I have firsthand experience with Sue and working with my daughter, and she's had a tremendous impact on her. And so I'm very appreciative on a professional and personal level. So thanks again, Sue. All right, and to continue in the vein of recognitions, as we end my portion of the report, I will remind the board and our viewers that we are celebrating a variety of recognitions this month. April is a busy month. It's Poetry Month. It's Math and Statistics Awareness Month. April fourth is Professional Appreciation Day. April eighth through the fourteenth is National Library Week. April ninth through the thirteenth is Assistant Principals Week. April tenth is National Library Workers' Day. April sixteenth through the twentieth is Public School Volunteer Week. April twenty-second is Earth Day. April twenty-second through the twenty-eighth is Administrative Professionals Week. April twenty-fifth is Administrative Professionals Day. April twenty-seventh is Arbor Day. And April thirtieth is School Nutrition Employee Week. That's the beginning of School Nutrition Employee Week. So a lot going on in April. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmierzak. Next week, Student Council is organizing a charity week to benefit two local charities, the Angel Fund and H2O for Life. Students can bring in monetary donations during their fourth-hour classes, and the class with the largest contribution will be rewarded with a catered lunch provided by Student Council. On Wednesday, the eighteenth, the annual Mr. Bear Pageant will take place, where ten junior boys and ten senior boys will compete, showing off their talents for the title of Mr. Bear. The profits of these events will be donated to these charities, and we're hoping for a great turnout. The White Bear Lake High School Band will be hopping on a plane and heading to New York City next weekend. There, they will be performing, exploring, and hopefully having a great experience sharing their talents in a different part of the United States. We are excited to hear about their travels and their adventures when they return. Last Friday, students from both North and South Campus organized teams and went head-to-head in the Spring Showdown Competition, where the teams played in various games such as lip sync battle and blind dodgeball. Team participants were encouraged to bring in new shoes for the shoe drive hosted at South Campus. The materials from the shoes are sold and repurposed, and the proceeds go to feeding the hungry in local communities. The winning team of the competition took home a one hundred dollar Buffalo Wild Wings gift card, but all who participated had a good time spending their Friday night getting competitive with their classmates. Most advanced placement courses at the high school have recently finished their coursework and are now starting the reviewing process. AP testing begins the second week in May, and students are working hard to do well in these tests. Best of luck to them in their academic endeavors. Along with May comes college decisions. All the seniors who applied to colleges have heard back at this point, and now many are selecting the school they will attend next year. May first is the national decision date, so in only a few short weeks, seniors will have made very important decisions about their future. Whether it be a four-year university, a technical school, or directly entering the workforce, we commend our seniors on their hard work throughout high school, and we are excited with their futures. The spring sports season began after spring break. However, the snow has been a huge hindrance in the ability to practice and compete for our athletes. Our sports teams have been shoveling tennis courts, practice fields, and the track, trying desperately to have places to practice. They should be proud of their resilience and hard work even in adverse conditions, and we can't wait to see how successful their seasons will be. Go Bears!
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Dr. Kazmierzak. With that, it will take us into our first discussion item, D1, which is the overview of the strategic plan. Dr. Kazmierzak?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to provide an overview of our new strategic plan. You'll be asked to act on the strategic plan a little bit later tonight. This portion of the meeting, as I mentioned, is an overview. I want to mention that we spent a fair amount of time at our last work-study meeting, a little over an hour, going through this. I promise you, I won't take that long tonight. I'm just going to touch on the highlights, and then later on, you'll be asked to approve the strategic plan, and implementation will begin this spring and over the summer and into the fall. So where we started was back in July. We conducted training with Dr. William Cook from the Cambrian Group. A couple of board members were part of that training, in addition to several other internal staff members. In August, we had a presentation to the school board, to our leadership team, and then also our entire staff were updated at convocation regarding the strategic planning process. And if you recall, school board members, those of you who were on the board at the time, we spent a couple of hours with Dr. Cook one evening, and he went over his mini strategic thinking session, and we learned about the strategic planning process that we are about to embark upon. In September, a thirty-member team met with Dr. Cook, and we identified our new belief statement, mission statement, objectives and strategies, and I'll go through those in some detail here in just a bit. From September through October, we held awareness sessions, and that included presentations that were part of the operating levy presentation. We started to talk about the strategic planning process as well as part of the lead-up to that election, and there were some other information sessions held as well. Our planning team members, the names are listed here. I don't expect you to go through those all right now, but suffice it to say that we worked really hard to select a thirty-member team that was well-represented of our community, both political, I mean, all walks of life. We tried political ideology, gender, and race, and we made an attempt to have this group represent our communities that make up White Bear Lake Area Schools. And then in October, we recruited over two hundred action team members. So the thirty-member team, I'm sorry, did work that we'll go through here shortly, and then the action teams were created. We had over two hundred community members and staff members join in an action team. So the action teams did their work from November of 2017 through February of 2018, and in fact, they did some follow-up work in March once they had feedback from that thirty-member planning team. So in February and March, the planning team worked with Dr. Cook to review those action plans. And then at the work-study meeting, just a couple of weeks ago, we went through those plans and highlighted some of the things that we'll be focusing on in the coming years. So again, as I did at the last board meeting, I want to apologize. I am going to read some of this, but I think it's important that we have our viewing audience hear some of these new developments in terms of our strategic plan. So first of all, beliefs, and a definition of beliefs. A belief is an expression of fundamental values, an ethical code, overriding conviction, inviolable principles. So that thirty-member team developed belief statements, and this is a list of those. Each person has innate value. Service nurtures both community and self. Everyone has the power to design their own future. Respect for diversity is strength. Integrity is fundamental to relationships. Each person has unrealized potential. Communities with shared goals have unlimited potential. We are stewards of the earth. Learning enriches one's quality of life. Everyone has a right to a safe and respectful environment. Challenge leads to innovation and growth. And all people deserve unconditional love. So from there, we then developed a mission statement, which, again, the board has seen on multiple occasions. I should mention, too, that this work has been available on the district's website for several months. So we've had, community members have been able to review that for quite some time, and we've had some discussion added at multiple board meetings. Our mission statement remains unchanged from that initial work that we did last fall. The mission statement is a declaration of the unique identity to which the organization aspires. I think that's a key word. It's what we aspire to be. It's not where we are today. It's what we hope to be in the future. It's our specific purpose and the means by which it will achieve its purpose. So again, bear with me. I'm going to read this. "The mission of the White Bear Lake Area School District, the community at the forefront of educational excellence, honoring our legacy and courageously building the future, is to ensure each student realizes their unique talents and abilities and makes meaningful contributions with local and global impact through a vital system distinguished by students who design and create their own future, diversity of people and ideas, safe, nurturing, and inspiring environments, exceptional staff and families committed to student success, abundant and engaged community partners." I'm going to move over parameters, and I'm going to jump to our objectives. Objectives are another part of what that thirty-member team developed. Objectives are an expression of the intended specific results the organization is committed to achieve. So our objectives: A hundred percent of students feel valued. A hundred percent of students accomplish their personalized learning plan. A hundred percent of students are prepared for and implement their design for their future. A hundred percent of our students graduate. A hundred percent of students creatively adapt to an ever-changing world. And each student meaningfully contributes to community. And finally, our strategies. So these are resolutions that dedicate the organization's resources and energies towards the continuous creation of systems to achieve the extraordinary as expressed in the mission and objectives. So we have eight strategies. And the eight strategies is what drove the work of the action teams. So the fifty-plus actions that we're going to take to implement our plan are all centered around these eight different strategies. So we will ensure that each student is the primary agent in their learning. And as you heard at the last board meeting, our board liaison, our student liaison, Ashley, spoke a little bit about that. She talked about how this could potentially be a game changer for White Bear Lake Schools. I don't know if you are comfortable saying anything now about it, if you wish. You're welcome to. If you're not, you can pass if you want to.
Yeah, I can.
On the spot. Yeah, I'd love to have you comment on that. I know you're excited about it.
Yeah, so the first strategy, I think, is really the driving force of our strategic plan. It's really what's going to, I think, push us to the future and help us to create a better learning institution within White Bear Lake Area Schools. It's going to give students the power to choose their own education and to make a personalized learning plan that's for them and allows them to succeed. So I'm really excited about the future of White Bear Lake Area Schools because of this first plan here.
Thanks, Ashley. And so we will ensure that each student is the primary agent in their learning, and that is incredibly important. It's a bold statement, and it actually, as you look at these others, those others will be impacted by that first one, by that first strategy that we just talked about. So as we look at the other strategies, keep in mind that overarching strategy of students being the primary agent in their learning will infiltrate the plan throughout. Okay, secondly, the next strategy, we will provide expanding access to a broad range of opportunities for all students. We will foster community engagement and partnerships. We will build organizational capacity. We will embrace all cultures with humility and respect. We will ensure learning environments enhance students' educational experience. We will engage families as partners in the education of their children, and we will ensure the social and emotional growth of our students. So we act on these strategies in order to accomplish our mission and objectives. This graphic may look familiar. It's appeared in some of our publications. It's on our website. It's been in our, it was in our annual update. It's been in a couple of different things that have been sent out to families. This is a nice summary of the strategic planning work. It doesn't have the detail that this, I'm going to jump ahead, that this particular document has, and I'm not going to go through this. I'm showing this for, so it's part of the record, and that's just for illustrative purposes only. This is where we spent a lot of time the other day, and we're not going to do this. We made one change. It was suggested by Board Member Chapman. We made that change. That was on the, let's see, I don't remember which number it was, but I can assure you that it was modified according to that request. Otherwise, it stayed the same. It highlights Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. Phase One is generally the next year or two, and Phase Two would be generally the next, with a little bit of overlap, Years Two, Three of the next five years, and then Phase Three would be a little beyond that. This will likely be changed as we go forward, as we, let me go back a slide. As we talk about mutual commitments with our leadership, on June twelfth and thirteenth, we may, and actually, leading up to that, we may make some adjustments to that plan, but you'll be well-informed about any changes that are made. We'll be coming back with strategic planning updates on a regular basis as we go forward. So right now, we're working on our implementation schedule and our cost considerations, and that was that spreadsheet I just showed you. Mutual commitments, June twelfth and thirteenth, and then in August, August thirteenth, in particular, is devoted to strategic thinking with Dr. Cook. And again, board members, you're invited to that. And then site planning, training on August fourteenth and fifteenth, and that will help building administrators with their building plans so that we can assure system alignment as we look to kick off another school year. So that is the strategic plan. And again, we went over this at some length a couple of weeks ago. I also want to call out Ange Nelson. Is she here? She's back there. Ange Nelson was our internal facilitator, which is a key role in the development of a strategic plan. Ange was the link between White Bear Lake Area Schools and Dr. Cook and his group. And so she had a lot to do with the process and the success of the process to date, and so I just wanted to make sure that she was given proper credit for the hard work that she did. And without her, we would probably be presenting you this in, I don't know, June or July. Thank you, Ange, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmierzak, and I know that we'll be acting on this a little bit later in the agenda, but I want to open it up and make sure if there's any comments, any discussion that we need to have, I would open it up and allow that discussion. Okay, so we will move on to discussion item D2, which is the first reading of school board policies. Policy 516, student medication. Policy 530, immunization requirements. Policy 525, violence prevention. As the first reading, these are the first time that will come for the board, time for the board to, or an opportunity, excuse me, for the board to ask any questions regarding these policies. I know that we've had them for a little while, so with that, I'll open it up to any questions regarding those policies. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, with the part of administration of medications, there's a part in there that, you know, some will be observed or administered by the school nurse and so on and so forth. My question really is, given the stark rise of opioid addiction, if opioids are legitimately prescribed, do we want to take any additional safeguards? Does the ingestion of the medicine have to be observed, something like that? So that A, they take it, or B, they don't split the pill in half and try to sell it to somebody else, things of that sort?
I'd like to welcome Kathleen Daniels to the podium, and she can try to answer your questions. If not, we can certainly follow up.
Right.
Welcome, Ms. Daniels.
Thank you, members of the school board, Chair Mullen and Dr. Kazmierzak. Our medications or any prescriptions are under lock and key, always in the nurse's office, and they count the pills every day, and they watch the student take the pill. And so there's a checklist that they go through, right student, right medication, right time, right dosage. And it's very prescriptive in how they follow that rule every day. So I think there'd be a very slim-to-nonechance that any medication would be leaving the nurse's office.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding those three policies?
Mr. Mullen, I just want to make a general comment. I could go through each...
I could go through each one in terms of the changes that were made. Generally, the changes were minor. Often, what we see with our policies when we review them is we have suggestions from Minnesota School Boards Association, and we incorporate those changes into the policy. And then any other changes that the policy committee deems appropriate, we make those changes as well. And I can just highlight what's in the memos, if you prefer, although I'm assuming that you've read the memos. And so those are pretty well documented. Mr. Chapman typically, typically would do that, and he is, but just given the distance and the uncertainty of whether or not this technology thing would actually work, we decided that we would handle it this way instead. So I'd be happy to go through each memo if you'd like. Otherwise, again, we can just continue if there are any other questions, and we can have those who've worked on the policy ready to answer those questions.
Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison, do you, either one of you have questions regarding those policies?
No.
Thank you, Mullen.
Okay. So we will bring those back for their second reading at the next board meeting in May. And with that, unless there's no, unless there's any other questions, we will go to our first operational item, which is E1, which is action on the strategic plan. Dr. Kazmercheck.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. So we went through the overview of the strategic plan, and this is the, this is the night that you are being asked to approve that plan that we've reviewed a couple of different times. So.
With that, we've got a recommended action from the administration to move the approval of the strategic plan as recommended by the 30-member strategic plan team and administration. Is there a motion to do so?
Emoved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Newmaster. This will require a roll call vote. Oh, excuse me. Back up. Is there any discussion regarding the action plan? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
No.
I have none.
Okay. Now we'll require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Motion is carried. With that, we will move to operational item E2, which is the action on the elementary art. Is it Mr. Wald?
Yep.
Mr. Wald, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck, Ms. Rennstedt. At the August 28, 2017, school board work-study session, school board reviewed the framework for the 2017-18 contract with White Bear Center for the Arts to provide, to provide elementary art instruction enrichment for our K-5 students. During this discussion, the board asked district administration to review our current practices related to elementary art instruction and make a recommendation for the 2018-19 school year. At the March 26 work-study session, we discussed, we discussed those recommendations for consideration. So just the history of it, since 2008, White Bear schools have contracted with the White Bear Center for the Arts to provide enrichment activities for our elementary students. Local community artists provide six lessons for each of our elementary classrooms. That totals 1,080 lessons for the school year. And our recommendation for the 2018-19 school year, in light of the fact that we worked on a new strategic plan that you had just adopted, that we implement the strategic plan. And just note that strategy number two indicates we will provide expanding access to a broad range of opportunities for all students. And then the specific result number three says programming directly addresses state art standards. And so that will be scheduled for work, and our leadership will begin working with our elementary principals and our staff on developing a strategy for expanding those, looking at those opportunities. So, any questions?
Let's get a motion on the, on the floor. So we have a recommended action to renew our current agreement with the White Bear Lake Center of the Arts for the 2018-2019 school year and implement strategic initiatives. Is there a motion to do so?
Emoved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion? Ms. Ellison, Mr. Chapman?
No, thank you.
No.
I will ask for a roll call vote regarding this action.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
With the caveat that once the strategic plan initial phase is completed, that we restore the elementary art positions to our schools if it is feasible. Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to operational item E3, which is action on the probationary teachers' nonrenewal. Is this, you'll take it? Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. This is an annual agenda item, the nonrenewal of probationary licensed staff. There's a resolution included in your board packet, and Ms. Fahy will read the necessary portion, and we'll go from there. So I'll just turn it over to you. Mr. Cooper is here with, if there are any questions about process. We're not going to discuss personnel items at a board member, a board meeting, however. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Fahy.
Ms. Fahy, if you can read the resolution, please.
Whereas the above-named teachers are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 624, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 624, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of the above-named teachers are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 624, are hereby terminated at the close of the current 2017-2018 school year and are not renewed for the 2018-2019 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and nonrenewal of the contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form.
You've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
Emoved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Is there any discussion regarding the resolution?
I have a question, Chair Mullen.
Ms. Ellison?
I am new to this, so if someone could help me understand the definition of probationary teachers or probationary positions?
A probationary teacher is a teacher who has not, has not achieved continuing contract status. So for example, three years, three consecutive years in a, in the same school district. Or if a teacher had achieved continuing contract status in a different Minnesota school district, it would be one year in a new district, so in White Bear. So it depends on the situation, but those are generally the cases.
Okay. And the teachers that are on this list have already been informed?
That I would have to defer to Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, welcome.
I believe so, yes.
Chairman, board, Dr. Kazmercheck. Yes, the teachers that are on our list have been informed. Our goal is to try to inform teachers prior to spring break, to give them an opportunity to seek additional employment. But that's the goal, is to notify them prior to spring break, have the nonrenewal.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just for the record, Mr. Cooper, is there a mandatory date at which notifications must be issued? And if so, what is it?
There isn't a mandatory. It's just kind of a preferred date. We try to use judgment as far as what time is a good time to tell them, to be fair, to give them an opportunity to find additional employment.
The nonrenewal process needs to be completed by the end of June, so June 30. And so there needs to be adequate time in advance of that, that date. And there are times when we, there may, I know last year, for example, if you were on the board, you might remember this, we actually had a nonrenewal a couple of different times. We brought, there were a couple of other issues that were, that arose, and we actually brought a similar action in May as well. So it's not uncommon where you might see it over a couple of months period.
Mr. Wilson?
The point is, Ms. Ellison, we're trying to be as generous as we can be with the notifications for the teachers involved. That's all I'm trying to say.
Any other questions regarding the resolution? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison? And I apologize, you guys are on the screen next to me, so I'm trying to make sure that if I don't catch something.
No.
Okay, with that, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you all very much. With that, we will turn to operational item E4, which is the action on the preliminary draft of the 2019-2020 calendar. 2020?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yep, Mr. Cooper and Ms. Paul?
Mr. Cooper and Ms. Paul. I apologize, I was getting over the fact that it's almost 2020.
It is a little shocking.
Yes.
It is. We had, you had seen a version of this earlier. We made some changes to it, so we're bringing a different version to you tonight. So.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmercheck, members of the board. You've got two calendars in front of you. The first, looking at the overview for the 2019-2020 calendar, wanting to bring this to the, to the board a lot earlier than we have in the past in terms of giving the public some broad ideas in terms of start, end dates, spring break, winter break, so that they can use that for their planning purposes. The calendar will actually be scheduled to officially be voted on in December, which is significantly earlier than we've done in the past. So just bumping up our processes in order to help families plan.
All right. And is that?
Do, are we going to talk about the 18-19 calendar now as well?
Are they both inside of this?
They're both in here, yep.
Okay.
We, in addition, we made one change to one date in which, as we looked at dates that are non-student contact days, we did make one adjustment and moved a non-student contact date later into the calendar, and it coincides now with Good Friday.
With that, we've got a recommended action to move the approval of the draft of the 2019-2020 school calendar, with the understanding that their complete calendar will be presented to the school board at the December 10, 2018 meeting, and approve the adjustment of the 2018-2019 calendar by moving the non-student contact day from March 8 to April 19, 2019. With that, can I ask for a motion? A motion from Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Newmaster. Any discussion under this item? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
No, not for me.
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. We've adopted the calendars. Operational item E5, action on the E3 grants for the White Bear Lake Educational Foundation. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen and members of the board. So this is the action on E3 grants, the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation. Establish these grants to further White Bear Lake area students' understanding and attitudes towards science, the outdoors, our community, and the world. This is another example of the great work that our foundation does for our students. And so it's my pleasure here just to highlight, again, these two grants that have been awarded. So the first one is titled Investigation on the Water. This was submitted by Principal John Lineiger from Otosca in the amount of $3,500. I'm not going to go through all of the detail on it, but it's there in your, in your packet. So that's the first one. And then, second, the Prairie School, an outdoor learning space at Otter Lake Elementary. And that was submitted by teacher Stephen Gravely, Tom Green, Joe Samuel, and Megan Baumler. And that amount, the amount for that grant is $4,000. Again, both, both very innovative, both very exciting projects. So again, we greatly appreciate the work of the foundation and the support that they provide for our teachers.
We have a recommended action to move to approve the two E3 grants in the amount of $7,500 from the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation. Is there a motion?
Emoved.
A motion by Ms. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Before we, as we open this up for discussion, I want to publicly thank the Educational Foundation for all their work and their, and the giving back to the schools. It's very important, and I really appreciate it. With that, is there any other discussion items? Mr. Wilson?
As one of our school board's two liaison members to the Educational Foundation Board, I'll just say for the public interest that E3 grants center on education, or environmental education. And these are just great programs. The first one will be a tremendous learning experience for those students going on the canoe trip, learning about the variety of biological niches that they'll encounter on their trip. And the second is actually building facilities for continued environmental education in years ahead. So those are some very, very impactful grant requests that I was glad to see, you know, approved by the Foundation Board. And now our turn to go ahead and approve the dissemination of those grants.
Ms. Newmaster?
And I'll just mention, as liaison to Otter, I have seen those parents meet extra times, and they're all excited about this. And they've got parent volunteers that are professionals in things like civil engineering and design. And they, they really are doing a project that I think will be very flexible and used by everybody in the school and maybe the other community members. It's exciting to see that happen, because they just really started working on it about a year ago, and it's, it's going to happen. And I think it's through a whole lot of support from the foundation.
Oh, it does.
Any other comments under discussion, questions? Mr. Ellison, Mrs. Ellison, Mr. Chapman?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will now get into operational item E6, action on the Central and North Tennis Courts. Mr. Wald?
Good evening again. We have a project that many in our community will be excited about, especially our Central Middle School teachers and students, as well as the many, many seniors who have made White Bear the epicenter of pickleball in the state. So we have a tennis, tennis court replacement and construction along the Bald Eagle Avenue at Central Middle School. This project is included in the district's 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan, and it will be funded using proceeds from the issuance of long-term facilities maintenance bonds. We had eight bids come in for this project, and we're pleased, the low bid was by T.A. Schiffsky for $327,000, significant, significantly below the average bids for this project.
Okay. We, there is a recommended action, move to accept the bid for the Central Middle School North Campus Tennis Courts Project, submitted by T.A. Schiffsky in the amount of $327,000. Is there a motion to accept the bid?
Emoved.
Emoved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. I'll assume that Mr. Chapman, you're the second?
That works for me.
All right. Is there any discussion underneath the bid? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Chapman or Ms. Ellison?
No, thank you.
Okay. I will ask for a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're getting some new tennis courts. Motion passes. We're getting some new tennis courts. With that, we will move to Action Item E7, which is action on the Bel Air-Normandy parking lots. Mr. Wald, I'm assuming that's you also?
That is, and it's maybe not as exciting as the new tennis courts, but we had seven bids for replacement of parking lots at our Bel Air and Normandy Park buildings. The low bid was by Peterson Companies for four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
With that, I will entertain a motion to move and accept the bid on the Bel Air and Normandy Park parking lots, submitted by Peterson Company in the amount of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Fahy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Is, is there any discussion regarding this bid? Mr. Wilson?
Just a comment. Mr. Wald, I don't know if you were responsible for the inclusion of listing all of the bids. I really appreciate it. You know, it's one thing just to say, well, this bid was the lowest and this one was the highest, but I really like seeing all the bids that were submitted. It's very interesting to me.
Thank you, Mike. I'll give credit to Dan Rozier, our supervisor of building operations, and his assistant Kathy Yonker, who put that together, so thank you, Mr. Rozier.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions regarding the motion?
Yes, I do have a question.
Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Wald, this is just overlayment, putting another layer over the, at Normandy Park, or is, is this more involved than that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Rozier to give a description of the project for you.
Thank you. Mr. Rozier, welcome.
Thank you, board members. Mr. Chapman, over at Normandy Park, the parking lot's in pretty rough shape, so it's quite a bit more than a typical grind and overlay. There is some soil corrections that are going to happen over there. Some curbing's going to be added. We-
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Rozier, I can't hear you really well here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chapman. It's going to be significantly bigger than just a typical grind and overlay over at Normandy. There's quite a bit of soil corrections that need to happen over there. Some curbing's going to be added to eliminate the washouts that we currently get. Some drainage over in the loading dock area. Every time it rains, the dumpsters start floating away on us because there's no drainage in that area, so we're going to add some drainage over in that area. We're going to, since we're doing some soil corrections, we're going to put a rain garden in. We're working with Rice Creek Watershed District to funnel some of that parking lot rainwater into the, into the rain garden. So it's going to be a pretty, a pretty hefty project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions regarding this, this item? Ms. Fahy?
Just a curiosity one, and I don't know if there's an answer to this, but I was just kind of intrigued by the range. There's like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar range here. Is there any, I, I know there may not be an answer, but it was just intriguing to me that there was such a range in-
We get that quite, quite often in some sealed bids. There's some contractors that, if you want to pay us a big hefty sum like this, they're hoping not too many bidders show up, and they're going to put a big bid in just thinking, well, maybe somebody's not going to show up, and I'll do it for this price. So sometimes we get that. Luckily, we really hit the pavement trying to get a lot of bids this time, and it was really helpful. The more bids we get, usually the better pricing, so that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
The motion passes. We're getting some new parking lots. Now on to Operational Item E8, which is the action on the North Campus Ceiling and Lighting Work. Mr. Wald?
Again, we had multiple bids, nine bids for this project. Again, the, this project, like the other two, is included in the district's ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan and is funded using, from the issuance of long-term facilities maintenance bonds. The project is awarded to Yahweh and Associates for two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
We have a action item to move and accept the bid for the White Bear Lake North Campus Corridor Ceiling and Stair Rail Replacement 2018, submitted by Yahweh and Associates for, in the sum of, in the amount of, excuse me, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Newmaster. Discussion, I have a question. In this one, we see the, we see the, the numbers vary out. Have we contacted the contractor to make sure that they've got the full scope of the job that we're asking them to complete?
Yes, we have. The, the engineer for the district does reference checks and contacts the, the lowest, the winner of the bid, to discuss the scope of the project, make sure that they're confident that they bid it, understanding the full scope of the project. And so we have assurance that they feel like they can do the quality work for the price that they bid.
And just as a follow-up, who will be monitoring that for, not only for the district, but making sure that the contractor abides by all those rules? I should have probably, Ms. Rozier probably should have told you to stay there, but-
Our architect, LHP, will be monitoring it. Will, I'm also be heavily involved in the project. I usually check on these projects every day, so it'll be closely monitored, especially with a contractor that we haven't worked for, with before, so.
That would, Ms. Beloit?
Just kind of from my information, what happens in, if by chance one of these, these companies go over their, their bid? When they're, when they finish, we get to the point where they're over, what happens at that point procedurally, or?
They're pretty much tied to their pricing right now. If there's something that we didn't put in the scope of the, of the bid details, of the documents, then they'll talk to us and our engineer beforehand, and we'll see if the change is acceptable, or if it's something that we missed in writing up the scope, or something they just ran into during the course of the project, then they'll work with us and our, our engineer to, to find a price for that. So sometimes there is some over, overages that we cover, and sometimes there's overages that they missed, and they cover, so.
Is that something the, the board is alerted to, or is that just sort of downline and?
I can field that one. Typically, no. Typically, it's not a, you know, I suppose it depends on the amount. If it was something that we just completely, it would, it would have to be that we completely missed something, or something was discovered when the project got underway that would require something very different from what we thought, but that would, that, that doesn't happen. That, that, the magnitude of that doesn't typically happen. Change orders are, are part of the, we live with those a lot. Things change, and there, there are some adjustments. Typically, they're not, you know, typically they're pretty, they're relatively small. On a project this size, you know, it'd be surprising to see that, you know, if it was ten or fifteen thousand dollars over, there would be a good reason, and we would, we would just process that internally. For something more substantial, yeah, we would certainly, if it, you know, if it might require some additional, well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily require additional bidding, but typically, we don't see that, but. That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, just an example. I can give an example. When we did some ceiling work over at North Campus a couple of years ago, the building inspector from White Bear came in, and he required some extra fire protection in some holes that were, we didn't know were in the ceiling. After they tore the ceiling apart, we didn't know they were in the walls, going into different spaces, and the building official required us to, we required the contractor to patch some holes with some different fireproofing, so the contractor worked with us, worked with the engineer to come up with a reasonable price that we both were comfortable with, and we did a change order for something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
You didn't ask this directly, but it might help clarify, just for new board members, as you think about the amounts, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong on these amounts, but we, we're required to bid any project that we, that, that is over a hundred thousand dollars. We can directly negotiate for projects that are between twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand. So those, even though those types of projects might not necessarily come to the board, if it's something that we're, we're directly negotiating, we have a local vendor who can do the work for us, and then anything under twenty-five thousand, or actually, the twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand is quotes. We just get written quotes, and then, but that isn't, that isn't a bid, a formal bidding process. And then twenty-five thousand or hundreds is just direct negotiation with local vendors. That gives you an idea of the scope of, of work. So zero to twenty-five thousand, we, we just work directly with a, typically a local provider. Twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, it's quotes, so it's a much less formal process than a bidding process, and that bidding is required for anything over a hundred thousand.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Rozier. Is this the first time that we're going to enter into a contact with Yahweh Engineering?
Yes, it is.
Was our engineer able to investigate, question Yahweh Engineering more rigorously than others that we've had direct business dealings with in the past? Or is it just one standard script that they got to stick?
No, this one, I, I asked our engineer to really check them out, because we haven't worked with them. The other bidders, Peterson Companies and Schiffsky's, we've done quite a bit of work with. We know their work. This one, we didn't, so I did especially ask our engineer to check some references on them and to make some phone calls, which he did.
Thank you.
Can you tell me any other schools that they've worked in?
They've done some work in St. Paul. They've done quite a bit of work in Minneapolis, the City of Minneapolis, Minneapolis Park Board. That was probably eighty percent of their references was work they did with the City of Minneapolis.
And then, can you just kind of give me a guesstimated start date on the project?
I would guess the ceiling work would start June twelfth or June thirteenth. We want to get going on that right away.
Is it a, and I'm not trying to dig into the product, I'm just kind of, for me, you know, I'm a building guy, so is it a lot of lights? Is it mostly ceiling tile?
Uh, just, they're ripping out that ceiling around the main office circle, so, and just putting in ceiling tile, probably twenty lights, and then they're going to modify some stairway railings to make them ADA compliant and get them up to code.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
No, thank you.
Not for me.
Okay, with that, this will also require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
All right, we will move to Operational Item E9, which is the second reading of the school board policies, Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave Policy, Policy 805, Waste Reduction and Recycling, Policy 806, Crisis Management Policy. And typically, the way we do these is we take them in well, one fell swoop, so we will do the same tonight. We will ask for a motion to accept those three policies for their second reading.
So moved.
A motion was made by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion on those three policies? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
Not here.
No, thanks.
Okay, I know that the-
Just one thing, because I know we have a lot of students back there taking notes. We actually looked at these, read through them carefully, and we've looked at the changes that are all highlighted in yellow, and these get reviewed, what is it, about every, is it three years, or?
Roughly about that, yes, ma'am.
It's a regular cycle, so we're not just going off a book that's been there forever.
And typically, the way they did earlier in the agenda, as you've seen the first readings, we, they actually come to, on the agenda for a first reading. We have time to ask questions. They come back for a second reading. Additional questions can be asked before we vote on them, which, if there's no more questions, we will do so now. Okay, with that, a roll call vote, please.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we will now enter into the meeting that we will go into a closed session to consider allegations against employees. This portion of the meeting will be closed, as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero five subdivision two B. Subsequently, the closed session, the school board will return to the meeting, open meeting, to take action. So at that, we will entertain a moment to go into closed session, or, excuse me, entertain a motion to go into closed session. It's getting late. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. We'll call Mr. Chapman's a second. We will need to do a roll call vote to go into closed session. We will then come back down into here after that, after the closed session, to meet and go through. Any discussion, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite any students that are here for an assignment. You need signatures from people? Okay.
No.
Yeah. As soon as we move to close, come on up, and we'll sign them for you, and then we'll head off for our closed session.
I'm sure there's homework tonight that needs to be gotten, right? So we can get to that. Ms. Newmaster?
I have one more thing. Sometimes we can make a comment, and I'm just going to make two pleasant comments quickly. It's National Library Week, and we have two librarian, media specialists, super people retiring at the end of the year. How many of you have a clap for David Olson at South Campus, who's probably helped you with many, you're nodding, many, many projects, complex things, and Connie Sterling, who is an elementary media person, and this year, she's at Hugo, Onika, and Vatness Heights. So you may have been at those schools, and these are people who have loved their students, there are many projects they've worked on with you, and we're going to miss them dearly. They're super valued, and Library Week is a good time to say hurrah, goodbye. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Ms. Newmaster. Any other discussion items to go into closed session? Ms. Fahy, would you please provide a roll call?
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
With that, we are in closed session. We can be upstairs in five minutes. I'd appreciate it. I'd like to call the school board meeting back into open session from closed session. Would the clerk please reflect the time? At this point, due to the rules of the school board, I believe we need to make a motion to extend the meeting time. I think, I believe that fifteen minutes would be adequate to extend the time. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Newmaster. I believe this will take a call for a roll call vote for this.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are extended. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to move and accept the separation agreement reviewed in closed session.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, please, a roll call vote, please.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
The motion passes. With that, I believe for the next item, we have a resolution. I will ask the clerk to read, and then we will ask for a motion on the resolution. The clerk, please read the resolution.
Whereas the school board has given preliminary consideration to allegations against an employee, and whereas the school board has reviewed a draft of a letter informing the employment, employee of proposed action, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 624 White Bear Lake Area Schools as follows. One, the school board hereby approves the letter setting forth the proposed action and the basis for the proposed action. Two, the superintendent is authorized and directed to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. Three, the superintendent or a designee is directed to serve the approved letter and the specified enclosures on the employee, preferably by personal service, and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Sections thirteen point four-three subdivision two, the specific reasons for the proposed action, the nature of the proposed action, and the letter are private personnel data on the employee at this time.
Is there a resolution to be read? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, a second by Mr. Wilson. This, is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Mr. Chapman, Ms. Ellison?
None here, so.
No, thank you.
With that, this will also require, require a roll call vote. It's getting late.
Fahy, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Chapman?